Pursuing to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, orders suspending, excuse me, imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. This is the meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found at www.hubbardstonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that that public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Thank you. So I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order and announce that our meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. We do have a members absent, but we do have a quorum present. So present are Francois Steiger, Christopher Monroe, Monroe, myself, Alice Lipton, the chair, and our alternate member Erica Deck. We may be joined by
Bill just logged in.
Okay, and Bill Holman, great, welcome, Bill. So we start with public comments, but if you are here to make comments related to 69 or 56 Gardner Road special permit hearings that are coming up, hold your comments and we'll take them then. Anybody else out there from the public who wants to speak? You, Mallory.
I'm the Zomu. So if you want to speak, you just need to either raise your hand or type into the chat function so I can see it. I don't see anyone.
Okay, so we'll move on. We don't have minutes to approve tonight. We do have four action items. The first is a continuation of a public hearing began on April 15th. And again, Mallory can, if you read for me the introduction, the published notice for that.
Yep, so 69 Gardner Road Site Plan Special Permit Continuance in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law and Hubbardston Zoning Bylaw. Article 22, the Hubbardston Planning Board shall continue a public hearing on Thursday, April 15th at 6:30 PM as provided under the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18. The planning board shall meet via virtual means to consider special permit/site plan application from Damon Schmidt of Royal Sun Farm for recreational/marijuana cultivation. The subject property 69 Gardner Road Assessor's Map 5 parcel 153, consisting of 19.3 acres is located within the commercial slash agricultural district. This is a split zoned parcel.
Thank you. So as the announcement just said, this is a continuation of a public hearing from April 1st on this topic. And it's regards a special permit application and site plan review for an outdoor marijuana cultivation establishment proposed for 60 Gardner Road by Sun Royals Farm LLC and owner Damon Schmidt is here, I believe, right? So it's important in discussing where we were and where we're going with this to note that 69 Gardner Road is a split lot with the front of the lot on in the commercial district and the back in the residential district, residential agriculture district. This is also the first marijuana establishment proposed in town. So as a result of a number of novel issues raised on April 1st, the initial hearing date two weeks ago, we reached out to town council to interpret for us, to answer for us certain questions that involve the interpretation of Article 22, which is Hubbardston zoning by law that governs commercial marijuana establishments and particularly involving this split lot situation. So since then, we have, we asked five specific questions to town council for clarification and we were given an opinion, an opinion on all of them by attorney Nicole Costanzo, who is here tonight to answer follow-up questions. And I circulated her opinion to her opinion letter on these issues to the board, the applicant, Mr. Murray, our consultant, who I believe is here, and Roland Jean, the building commissioner, who I guess maybe also here tonight. He's here, okay, so I'll attempt to, and she can correct me, to summarize just for the public and other people, the five questions and attorney Costanzo's replies. The first issue that we asked was whether or not the applicant needs a tier one or tier two cannabis control commission license in addition to the tier six license he has in order to grow marijuana on the residential side of this split lot. And attorney Costanzo concluded he did not need to have a second permit to do that. The second issue was how much marijuana can the applicant grow on the residential side of the split lot line? So, and of course, stop me if I miss, if I miss anything. But attorney Costanzo concluded that the split lot zoning by law allows up to 50 feet in into the residential zone to be treated as commercial and that with the commercial zone restrictions applying instead of the residential. This means that although the canopy limit in the residential zone in a residential district is 10,000 square feet, the applicant could conceivably add additional square feet in this 50-foot area by the border. But the entire property, both sides, the entire property cannot exceed 50,000 square feet of canopy because that's the limit of his license. The third issue was whether the driveway, parking lot and loading areas have to be paved. Attorney Costanzo concluded that austere parking and loading areas are required to be paved in a commercial district. And it's also that the planning board does not appear to have authority to waive those requirements. So although she didn't state this specifically, presumably this would include at least the driveway that leads to the parking and loading areas. We can discuss that later. The fourth issue was whether refrigerated trucks can be used in place of a building for the processing, testing and packaging of the marijuana grown on the property prior to shipping that crop out for manufacture and sale. So attorney Costanzo concluded that since the building is not required under our bylaw for outdoor marijuana cultivation, the planning board cannot impose this condition. She said the CCC defines outdoor cultivation to include processing, testing and packaging of the crop that's grown on the field. The CCC also requires these steps be done onsite before the crop is transported. So these steps are part of the cultivation and cannot be classified as light manufacturing, in her opinion. She said it's up to the CCC to decide whether refrigerated trucks can be used in lieu of a building. So in her opinion, and again, she can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe she's saying the planning board can neither require construction of a building nor prohibit the use of refrigerated trucks for processing, testing and packaging of marijuana if it's grown on that same site. The fifth question we posed to her was whether the applicant can install outdoor electricity to run the refrigerated trucks without constructing a building first. And attorney Costanzo, again, if I have her, if I'm interpreting her right, advised that electricity cannot always be considered an accessory use to a building citing other outdoor uses. Excuse me. Power such as powering a well for irrigation or lights for a parking or conceivably, you could think of playing fields, lights. So in her opinion, the planning board, I believe, cannot condition installation of electricity on the construction of a building. But she said whether the installation of electricity is feasible and allowed in this situation would be determined by the state building and electric codes, which are of course not part of our planning board's jurisdiction. Also going back to a comment I skipped, which was with respect to the use of the trucks. She said that the CCC would have to make that decision whether they ultimately would allow them to be used in lieu of a building. But again, that would not be our jurisdiction as a planning board. So I'm going to recognize attorney Costanzo, let her speak first and then other parties can ask questions. But I do want to remind the board that while town council opinions are important, they are advisory, they're not law and they're not binding on the board. But if we ever hearing everything, we choose to adopt her opinions, accept her opinions as the planning board's position on these issues, we can vote to do that. So I'll turn it over to attorney Costanzo who's here.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair, I would emphasize that these are just town councils' opinions interpreting the bylaw. The planning board's interpretation of its own bylaw is of course entitled to deference. And I do think that you did a very good job of summarizing the opinions that I give, that I gave. However, I just would like to clarify one thing that you said with respect to the use of trucks rather than structures. That is something that is within the planning board's jurisdiction to decide. What my opinion was saying is ultimately if the planning board does allow it, there would be an additional step for the CCC to determine whether testing inside those trucks is sufficient for purposes of the CCC's regulations. But in my opinion, whether or not a structure or a vehicle can be used is something that is within the planning board's jurisdiction. However, the bylaw doesn't expressly provide that marijuana establishments must be in enclosed structures.
Okay, one question too that I meant to say is, but you did conclude also that trucks would not be prohibited, the use of trucks in a commercial property.
In my opinion, yes, because the zoning bylaw doesn't expressly prohibit. The zoning bylaw doesn't expressly state that all marijuana establishments must be in enclosed structures.
Okay. All right, so neither prohibits it nor requires it.
Correct.
So I'd like to give the applicant a chance to speak and ask him particularly this, I'm working, I can only work with what has really been presented to us. So when I sent this out, what had been filed and presented was a no building, you know, your plan with no building that we discussed last time. I know there's been a lot of back and forth since then. So I guess my first question for you is, do you want, and then do you want to proceed with the plan that was presented? Because there's
All right, hi, hi, everybody.
Yeah. Damon Schmidt, yeah.
Hi, I'm Damon. Thanks for being flexible tonight and I just wanted to remind everybody that I have a community outreach meeting in Wolfam from 7:00 to 7:30. So I am going to just disappear at 6:58 and I'll come back at 7:30. But I let Mallory know that ahead of time, so not to be rude. That was planned a while ago, but in terms of the buildings, so those freezers, nothing really happens in those freezers. I mean, they're negative 10 degrees, so you don't hang out in them. Everything that we're doing is out in the open field, all of our taking down of the harvest, putting it in the boxes, measuring it. Everything's done under camera and out in the open field. We then put it in a box and put it in negative 10 degree freezer and closed the door. So no one's actually in those freezer trailers. They do have cameras inside of them and security, but they're basically closed. In terms of moving forward, you know, I'm willing to move forward however this works to get a yes vote tonight. You know, I know that we have an issue with the nine parking spots, if they're going to be paved, they're not paved. So I'll go, I'll pave it, you want me to pave it, I'd like to get a variance. You know, we do have a plan that we put on our new site plan for a 12 by eight or 12 by 24-foot structure that would have a bathroom. We already have a septic pit approved by the Board of Health, so we could put in a septic system. And then we could have a mechanical room and we'd have a storage room and an office room. But to start, what we are going to be doing with your permission is we'll have a 28-foot trailer on wheels that will have the office in it, which has the security systems, the computers. No one's really hanging out and they're doing anything. It's actually a limited access area, basically for me and probably Ron, our head grower. And then we'll have two freezer trailers, we'll have some porta potties, we'll have the generators and we'll have a warm hand washing station. And that will get me my approval from the Cannabis Control Commission to, you know, put plants in the ground in June. So then the only question, you know, in the meantime is, all right, I'll build a building. We just, Brendan gave you about 70 pages of stormwater calculations or something, I don't know what it was. So that's for that building, I believe, and some of the crushed stone. So mostly it's the crushed stone. So we can put that building in, it won't go in by the time the CCC asks you for a final, am I okay? So, you know, I'd like the planning board to vote yes tonight and then just figure out how you want me to proceed. But the CCC will be reaching out in about three weeks asking you if, you know, I'm good to go. And at that time, I'd like to, you know, we're going to have porta potties and everything I just said, you know, ready and installed with security.
Okay, has I, you know, I know stuff came in late this afternoon.
Yeah.
So it, you know, I haven't read it. I'm just going to be frank about it. I had other things that I had done. So I don't know that, you know, I think the pushing the envelope to get actually a vote on this tonight when we're just trying to get a handle on what it is. Where are these, you know, the answer to these issues and where you stand tonight is going to be very difficult, but we do meet again.
Hopefully, when I, when I come back from my break, we can, we can work it out.
Okay, so do you want us to continue in here? Let your lawyer represent you. Joe Connors represents you, right?
Yeah, I have Joe Connors on the line with me, my attorney. I also have Mitch from Goddard Consulting. I have Brendan from the engineering company Probrick and then I have Ron Baldwin, who's our head grower. So everyone knows what I'm trying to do, so you guys can definitely continue without me. And I can, I can talk through text with Ron while this is going on, so.
Okay.
Or you can wait, I'll be back at 7:30. You know, you have, you have Bowie and some other stuff, whatever you want to do, I'm comfortable.
It wouldn't, I mean, it'd be maybe confusing to the public out there, but we could postpone this hearing, take Mr. Bowie out of order and come back. You think you'll be back by 7:30?
Yep, I have a hard stop at 7:30, so I'm just getting off of the Zoom and they can send me questions if they have.
What's the favorite, what do you think the board members, do you want to continue on without him or do you want to come back to this? I, you know what, Damon, I think we should continue on because we have the advantage of having our lawyer here tonight.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, so we'll continue on and we'll see you at 7:30.
Thank you.
All right, yep. Okay, um, I want to hear from Bill Murray if he's there.
Hello.
First, yes.
I'm here.
Hi, Bill. So for the public, Bill Murray is from Places Associate, they're a consultant. I don't know whether, I've not followed this whole string of, I was very focused on the issues raised on the first and this whole conversation that's gone on since then about putting a building in or not putting a building in. You know, I haven't really followed and I haven't read what's been recently submitted. But I guess my question would be, do you see any possibility of actually getting a vote to approval tonight?
Oh.
Okay, can you tell us what, how we might? How we might proceed to get to that point at the very next opportunity? Where do you see the problems?
Well, like, like all of you, I got a 97-page package at 4 o'clock this afternoon or 3:30 or something like that and revised plans. That, that was tonight. I haven't even had a chance to look at it. So whether they have addressed the issues, I can't tell you. I printed it, I brought it with me, but I haven't unrolled the plans nor have I had an opportunity to read the, read the package.
Okay, do you have an opinion, given town council's opinion on? I guess the, the use of these, I guess I did misunderstand, it was key clarified, which was helpful, that the only thing refrigerator trucks would be used for would be freezing the product. So I guess the question is, is it feasible in your mind to have a, you know, a time limited plan where he could, if he could, you know, satisfy some of the other issues? You could operate the business out of a trailer for a year, say, for the season?
Again, I kind of defer that specific issue to the building inspector because that's a discretionary, with council's opinion, that's a discretionary item by the planning board, I think. As long as it's in the commercial district and meets building code, electrical and all those were kind of requirements. So the use of, first I defer to the building commissioner on, he had some very specific concerns about that. Other than that, no.
Okay, so assuming, I mean, I'm going to talk to Roland, I know he's here, I'm going to let him talk. But assuming that, that this plan is time limited, that he could operate the business without a permanent structure through what he proposes for this planting season, what do you think also has to be resolved before we could reach that? Is his new plan, for example, any different than this plan?
It is.
Yeah.
It is. Yeah. Not, not significantly, but it is different. And his, his engineer is here, he could describe what the differences are. I just barely cracked it open.
Okay, we can hear from his engineer for a minute. Who is that? That's?
Mr. Pyburn.
Brendan Pyburn.
Hi, would you like to tell us, you know, we do have this difference in that every time we, this problem, that every time we meet to discuss this, the ball has moved, you know? We, we don't know as a planning board what actually the plan is. So I think at some point, there has to be an application that has been weeded of all the stuff that's not in it and explicitly states, you know, the plans that are applicable and the statistics that are applicable.
Understood.
Because it's just, it's just, I think it's hard enough for people like Bill that are used to this to keep up and it's really hard for a lay committee that meets twice a month to keep up with what's going on. But I'll let you try to explain what the new plan that you apparently filed tonight, this afternoon, has that's different from the plan that was filed on April 1st.
If you could. So I don't know if I'm okay to share my screen.
I can make you a call host, hold on one second. Yeah, I'll set to go.
So those plant, oh boy, just dropped out on me. All right, so you are looking, are these plans coming through?
You have to ask Mallory.
Can't see them.
No, I can't see them, man.
All right. Would help if I hit the share button. It should come through now.
Okay, I can see, I can see it. I don't know about anybody else.
Okay.
Looks fairly similar, Bill is right, to the old plan.
Right, so in, in general, just, I mean, to keep it brief, understanding that there is a little bit of a moving target with this regarding the pavement, whether or not he's okay to move forward with, without paving or seeking a variance and that, that separate issue and the, the electrical connections. In general, the modifications to this plan include adding gate locations from the trailer area into the grow areas, showing the gate location off of Gardner Road itself. Additional, additionally, we added Damon, like Damon mentioned, putting in a 12 by 24 foot building off on the left-hand side, if you're looking at the plan right where my mouse is. And we also took the opportunity to address some of Mr. Murray's comments regarding erosion, sedimentation control. Obviously, when the field gets tilled after the growing season is complete, that the soils are exposed and also some just general runoff stormwater concerns as well. In summary, we, we've proposed a few features on the site that we believe will, will mitigate the issues that were brought up in the initial peer review letter that we were served from Mr. Murray, received from Mr. Murray. One is we will be adding a stone filter berm on the down gradient side of the growing area, which you can see as this dark shaded catch along the outside. This will, in theory, protect the resource areas, including the vernal pools and the culver crossings of any sediment that may be generated during that tilling process after the grow seasons completed. We've also included a cultech infiltration system for the proposed building to capture and recharge the, any runoff that is generated from that building. That, that has been sized to accommodate the 25-year storms, so that captures and infiltrates all of that runoff. Along with those two improvements, we've also included a proposed infiltration, little bit of a detention trench on the backside of the temporary trailers. I think in the original submittal, the thought is that these trailers being on wheels and technically being temporary in nature where they will be moved off of, off the site. They're not permanent impervious cover in this area. Understanding the proximity to the resource areas, we've, we've included a, like I said, a small three-foot wide by one foot deep trench along the backside of this trailer area. I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see it a little bit clearer. So along, right along this backside, any runoff that will be generated from the roofs of these structures will follow the contours, which currently will want to grade to this resource area down here. It will be captured and recharged and any overflow that will follow existing flow patterns will flow through the filter berm and then discharge ultimately into the resource area as it doesn't exist in conditions. That is the, those are the major changes to the plan. Along with those, there's a few, we added a few modifications. We removed, we removed the one parking space to make it nine parking spaces. We've also added some bollards in front of the porta potties. These obviously should, should Damon's, I guess, phase two go, come to fruition and in a building be installed with a bathroom, the porta potties would be removed and so would the bollards. But one of Mr. Murray's comments was, how do we protect the porta potties from cars coming in and ultimately if they get tipped over, they're essentially going to be tipped over right into the resource area, which is, which is an accurate statement. So we are providing the bollards here to protect that from that exact situation. Understanding that this came in late today, I've been in Mr. Murray's shoes as the peer reviewer, knowing that the likelihood of him being able to flip through this at between 4 o'clock and now is unlikely. Happy to answer any questions that, that you may have from looking at this, at the plan and that brief description. Also, understanding what you said, that the likelihood of a vote getting, getting taken place tonight, I would be happy to jump on a a conference, a separate conference call to, to really work through whatever stormwater related issues and questions that may, that may still remain, that we can really move this thing forward and get it squared away and work towards approval for whenever that vote may happen.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions for you. Has the canopy area changed calculation? This is Alice Lipton.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Connors can speak more to the requirements of what is allowed versus what is not allowed. We added a call out to our plan outlining what is allowed within each zoning district. So in this case, and correct me if this is wrong, but if we're allowed, we have 60,000 square feet of commercials on grow area, but we're allowed up to 50,000 square feet of actual marijuana canopy. And then for the residential district, we have, it's a 55,000 And then for the residential district, we have, it's a 55,000 square foot area, but we are allowed up to 10,000 square feet of actual marijuana canopy.
Okay, I believe that town council's opinion, and again, it's an opinion, is that you're not allowed more than 50,000 square feet on this entire parcel. Can we get your read on that? Tony Costanzo.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. A tier six license from the Cannabis Control Commission is limited to 50,000 square feet of canopy, so there couldn't be under a tier six license more than 50,000 square feet of canopy. If the applicant wanted additional canopy, then either he would need to request a tier seven license or apply for a separate license under the name of another entity, however he structures it. But under a tier six license, he would only be allowed up to 50,000 square feet of canopy.
And that, that, that could be something as simple as a, as a miscommunication and a typo somewhere. Easy modification on our end, if, I know, I'm pretty sure Damon wants to stay at that, at the tier license he's at currently. So that, that's an easy change on our end.
Usually in these, you actually, you don't just state, well, this is the limit. You had, you state the actual calculation of what you're growing. You know what I mean?
Yep.
We, we're looking for that calculation.
Alright, yeah, I would have to, I'll have to circle back with Damon on that, on his.
Okay, I think from what he said previously, that the actual growing area with all the restrictions is significantly less than the 50,000 square feet. But that's again, my recollection from, my recollection from things that were said earlier. Alright, so I know, I have another question, I do want the board to have an opportunity, I want Roland to have an opportunity too. But there is this question of the driveway and the parking and the loading areas. So town council's opinion is that parking and loading areas have to be paved. It is not something that the planning board can, you can ask for a waiver and the planning board can waive. So I guess also what I want to ask, would that also apply, it seems to me logically it would, to the, to the driveway into these parking and loading areas? But again, does, can, can you, can town council help us with that, or maybe Roland actually too, but? Tony Costanza still there?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm reviewing the, the zoning bylaw right now to see if it speaks to driveways.
If they are the leading to it, I mean, it'd be different if. And the other thing is, and then looking at refrigerated trucks, these are, these are big vehicles that are going to be going over that road. They're like 53 feet long and, you know, full of heavy refrigerator equipment, so it's not like just the field hands cars that are, would be traveling this road, it seems to me. While she's looking that up, is Roland available? Roland Jean?
I am, Madam Chair, thank you.
Hi, hi Roland, can you, can you answer that question from your perspective? Is the zoning, is commissioner?
I believe that the, the access drive is exempt per our zoning. I believe it's exclusive to parking and loading areas.
Is that correct? Okay, so we.
Madam Chair.
Francois, yeah, go ahead.
It, it is, as Roland bit stated in section 5.3, it does say very specifically that off-street parking and loading area shall be surfaced. The word shall is, I think, very definitive here. It says it shall be surfaced with asphaltic, bituminous cement or other property bound pavement so as to provide a durable and dustless surface. So it is limited to the off-street parking as well as to the loading areas.
So if our board, I'm not saying we're going to do this, but if our board approved the plan is with those areas paved, but the gravel road existing is continuing to exist as a gravel road, would that be? You know, assuming it's, you know, built up to the correct width and so on. Acceptable? I guess I'm addressing that question to Roland.
My opinion, it would meet our zoning requirements, yes.
It would meet the zoning requirements, okay.
So, Madam Chair, Bill Murray?
Yeah, you're the next person I want to ask, yes.
Okay, so under special permit and site plan, it's my opinion that the, the driveway is a discretionary item because it requires that they have adequate and sufficient access to the site. And we've made the statement that a 12-foot wide crust stone driveway is barely adequate for the use of the tractor trailer coming and going. And if a tractor trailer is coming and going at the same time, somebody else is trying to come and go like an ambulance or a fire truck, it's not going to be wide enough.
Of course. What would your recommendation be to make it a safe and acceptable egress and access?
Well, at, at a minimum, something like 18 feet, because then you can actually get, you got two nine-foot wide aisles, you can get some vehicles, because if a fire truck has to go off the edge of the road to avoid smashing mirrors with another truck or something like that. Plus 12 feet does not meet the NFPA standards for a driveway for commercial use. So it would have to be something a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, so if we extended it 18, say to, to 20 feet, if that was the required, could it, would it be suitable as a, suitable for the purpose here if it was constructed correctly of gravel?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Constructed and maintained.
Yes. Okay, so, I don't know, I, I kind of feel like there's so many issues here, but I am trying to narrow some of them down so that we might, might get to where we want to be. I, I had another question, which is, is there an existing building on the residential site? I thought I saw one shown on a plan at some point, no?
No, it's, it's, it's a vacant lot.
Totally vacant, okay, so explain the, I know it's explained in emails and stuff we haven't read, but explain the building you're planning to create. This is located on this plan, it's back in the, the back corner of the grow area that shaded?
Yes, I don't know, so truthfully, I, I don't have a lot of the details on that building. I don't know if Damon's attorney, Mr. Connors, can speak to that building in more detail. I, I have the dimensions of the building and to size of infiltration system and that was, that was as much of the detail as I have.
That was the 12 by 24 structure?
Yes.
Okay, and what was that, what will that building contain and when do you propose to build it? It will contain like, for example, restrooms in a septic field?
So I, I believe that's the, the intent. The intent is that we'll eventually have restrooms in a septic system. Which, as Damon mentioned, we've done, we've done the park tests, septic system has yet to be designed and approved, but um, the test pits have been completed.
Okay, so it would house that and then it would house a certain, it would house some mechanical equipment, he said, right? Which would be the, the safety, they would surveillance equipment? And what else, the, the, maybe the irrigation system equipment?
I'm, I'm, truthfully, I'm, I'm unsure, I don't, I don't have that information.
Alice, Attorney Connors has his hand up, so I don't know if you can, okay, let him speak, that's fine.
Hi, Attorney Connors on behalf, Joseph Connors on behalf of Damon. I, I do know that he planned definitely to put the restaurants in there and office area and cameras, so the, I do know that. And I'm looking for, he'd sent me a kind of a, a rendering of what it might look like, I'm, I'm looking for that, but but I do know that he intended to put restrooms and, and office area in there and as well as cameras and utilities, electric utilities, so.
And assuming, and this is, you know, a big if, we were to approve the, the temporary situation with an office trailer and porta potties for this year and we set a deadline for getting that building constructed, how long would that take to construct? The next season, before you plant next spring, or?
I, I can't tell you, but I don't think that's an unreasonable request, I mean, I think that it's a small building, you know, I think that's reasonable. He probably start construction on this summer, but.
Okay, I want to again, address a question to Roland, if he's still there. Have, have, have you seen a, you know, I have flipped through, there must be 100 emails on this, but have you seen a rendering of what he proposes to build here? Mr. Jean?
No, I had no idea that there was even a plan to build a building until four o'clock this afternoon.
Okay. Alright, so I'm going to.
Alice, Bill has his hand up too.
Yeah, I think we need to go back to Bill and I think, well, you need to give us at least a summary of what, what you would expect before we can move forward on this, given the answers that, you know, we, where we are right now between town council's opinion and the, what's been represented tonight. You have to unmute him.
You didn't.
Can we go back to see Bill?
There we go, sorry.
Instead of, well, maybe we'll leave the plan up, go ahead.
So the building is in support of the cultivation and it's in the residential district. Isn't the building an extension of the commercial use in the residential district and is it allowed?
Well, I think it depends on, I ask again, town council's here. I think that if the building were used to just support the agriculture, the outdoor grow operation, it would be allowed, would it not? Meaning it, it, it couldn't be do, it couldn't be used for anything except equipment, restrooms and the harvesting and packaging. Is that correct? Why do you think it would not be allowed, I guess is my question, Bill?
Well, because the growing of marijuana is not a zoning exempt use. And it seems to me that that building, it's not a residence, it's not an accessory structure, therefore it's a principal structure for a commercial grow operation. So just my logic says that that is a commercial operation, commercial building being built in the residential district, I don't think is allowed under zoning, just as a quick. I can, I can see the opposite side of that argument too, because it's a special permit and we can allow the growing in a residential district and it's allowed by special permit, so therefore you can make the argument that it is allowed use, but is it a commercial building or is it an accessory to a permissible use?
Um, Attorney Connors has his hand up too, Alice.
Yes, Attorney.
I would say that, I mean, if the, one of the requested relief that he would be getting to tonight, unless I'm correct me if I'm wrong, would be a special permit to operate an outdoor marijuana cultivation up to 5,000 feet in the residential zone, is that correct? So therefore, that would be supporting that as an accessory.
But it's not in the 50 feet, the building itself is not in the 50 feet, which is the extension, a law by right extension of the commercial use.
Right, but I'm saying that isn't, isn't he also permitted by special permit to have at least 5,000 of a grow, 5,000 square feet of a grow area in the residential zone?
10,000, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's the relief he's getting in that it's accessory to that particular use that's, you know, that's permitted by special permit.
Yeah, but it's a principal structure, it's not an accessory structure. It's the only structure.
The only structure, right, we need to go back to town council on this. So town council, I don't know, you can maybe need to think about this, but in this split lot situation, could a building that is that is integral to the outdoor growing of marijuana and that it houses restrooms and equipment related to the growing, doesn't continue, doesn't have any manufacturing, doesn't have any shop for processing beyond beyond what is considered cultivation, which you say is the, the the processing and packaging, right? But that would be presumably for the entire, for the entire crop. I mean, I guess that's another question, if you're going to use it for actually part of the processing and packaging, because Damon just said refrigerated trucks aren't used for that and it would go on in the open, if you're going to move that into the building, then perhaps you are overburdening it because you'd be packaging and processing 50,000 square feet of product in the zone that only allows processing of 10,000 square feet. I don't know, I want to hear from town council, what's your feeling if he were to put that structure where he proposes to put it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it really is a fact-specific inquiry and we would need to know what the structure is going to be used for. If it is going to be used for the cultivation and processing of marijuana, then I think it may be allowed as, you know, a marijuana establishment under the zoning bylaw, but if it's, if it has on their uses, that would change our opinion. So really, we would need to know what exactly the applicant intends to use the structure for.
Assuming he was going to use it for cultivation, processing and packaging, I guess it's processing and packaging for the entire 50,000 square feet of crop, would that be allowed?
In my opinion, it would be allowed as a, as a marijuana establishment.
Even though it's in the section of the lot, not in the 50-foot incursion zone, but clearly in the residential zone?
The residential zone does allow, does allow marijuana cultivation. And part of the definition of marijuana cultivation includes the processing and packaging. So if that's what's being done in that structure, then in my opinion, it would be allowed. But again, it is a fact-specific inquiry and we need to know more.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, if, if I may as well, with respect to the question about paving, the access area, the, the zoning bylaws themselves, the section that's cited in our opinion does talk about off-street parking and loading areas. The only section of the zoning bylaws that do refer to driveways talks about parking areas for more than 10 vehicles and associated driveways. And in those cases, the driveways would have to be constructed in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations which do require, which do require paving. So again, it, it really does depend on what the applicant is doing. I will also note that when issuing a special permit, the planning board does have to make a determination that the use doesn't have vehicular or pedestrian traffic, so as to cause, you know, an adverse impact to the neighborhood. And if there's, you know, concerns about use of the use, use of that area, you know, in the event of emergencies that the board does think might have an adverse impact, I do think it would be reasonable to add a condition that that area be paved.
Okay, so again, it's, the, the threshold is 10, is a parking lot for more than 10 vehicles, then they have to comply with subdivision and subdivision requires pavement. Is that correct?
Correct, so I do think again, you can add, even if it's less than, than 10 vehicles, I think you could add a condition to the special permit that, that access area be paved. You know, if there's a finding that unless it's paved, there would be an adverse effect to the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not convinced that paving it is the right or wrong thing to do, I mean, in some ways that, that law also says impervious or pervious pavement should be considered in sensitive areas and this is a sensitive area, but I am a little concerned that you could, you, 10 cars, you gotta pave it under the rules. Nine cars, you don't, but you can have nine cars and three freezer trucks that are 58 feet long. I mean, that seems, it seems a sort of counterintuitive to me, you know what I mean? But if that's the way it reads, then that's the way it reads. But clearly you'd have, but it is, it's also seasonal use, which maybe is fair to consider. These vehicles are not going to be going there in the winter, they're not going to be parked there for the winter on any of it, so. Sounds like the board has some choice on that issue with the nine spots we'll have to think about. Sounds like the board has some choice on that issue with the nine spots, we'll have to think about. I, I guess I want to talk to Roland again for a minute and then I'm gonna let the board, and if there are members of the public, they certainly need a right to speak too. So Roland, if, if we conclude that this, that the building could be built of right. Then, then that gives him. That would require electricity, of course, could he put then in, in your view, electricity in also where the trucks are parked?
Yes, I believe that's the case.
Okay, because I am sensitive to the neighbors, I mean, these neighbors really probably don't want to listen to refrigerator generators run all night. You know, generators running refrigeration all night and it might be a more peaceful. Environment if electricity could, could be installed there. Alright, I want to go back to Bill and ask. Ask, Bill, can you help us if we're trying to get to the point where we could, we could actually have a vote on this in the near future? Do you think you can create a list of what is really needed within the next?
Well, first I have to go through the, the application package, having learned an awful lot tonight, they've revised the package. We, a lot of the comments really haven't changed, they've modified the plan ever so slightly. But we've received an awful lot of clarification, thanks to the town council and the building commissioner. So I still need another two weeks to get your review letter, we'll give you a summary of, of non-compliant items, we'll give you a. Punch list of things that we strongly recommend that the applicant modify. For public safety and those kind of concerns.
Can you get a? Can you do a shortlist first that puts in like the details requested on this building? So if we have to then send it back to town council, we can do that, what's requested for the building?
Well, they're required to give you a floor plan and elevations under the site plan review regulations.
Okay.
So that's pretty straightforward.
And that hasn't been included in anything to your knowledge?
No.
Okay, so to Mr. Connors, is it?
Yes.
How soon can? I mean, you're, you're the one pushing this to try to get a crop in and we're missing critical materials.
What are we missing?
Yeah.
Damon's back.
Yeah, no, I just, the site plan, we turned everything in for the site plan, didn't we?
Damon, they're asking about building plans, you have a, a building plan for the building you proposed and an elevation plan for the building that you proposed?
Uh, no, that was just a, no, we, that was something that we had added late, so we can get one. Building, we can get one, yeah.
Could you put a timeline on when you can get that, because they were looking for that to.
What specifically are we looking for, just a general floor plan or?
What, Bill, is?
Specific floor plan.
Alright, you, you want a floor plan, alright, I thought I had sent in a floor plan, but I can send one in right now.
And elevation statement, we need to know what it's gonna look like.
Alright, alright, so like a real architectural plan, I can, I get you.
And Damon, Damon, they did ask when you were gone, what would be going on indoor, in, in that building? I represented, I don't think you're gonna do any cultivation work and they had strictly restrooms and. Can you just confirm that?
So, we're talking the twelve by twenty-four foot building, so in that building, we would, you know, put a bathroom. We'd have a, you know, hot water, we'd have a mechanical room, we'd have an office for, you know, all of our security systems and, you know, basically an office to conduct business and then we'd have another room. Which would be kind of a, you know, bad product storage room, you know, a place that we take our bad products, kind of actually package it in there. So more cameras, more scales, and then that, that's like a secure room, so basically that building. Replaces that twenty-eight foot trailer. You know, in terms of what it has there plus the porta potties and gives us better hot water.
So you would not be doing any of your packaging or processing in that building?
Well, I, I guess you would call it packaging and processing, I guess, for, you know, the back storage and everything, I mean, we gotta package it and put it in, you know, through the metric system.
But the, but in terms of harvesting the crop, sort, sorting the flowers from this, but all of that would go out still in the open, that's?
Yeah, that's in the open, I mean, if, I would, I guess talk to Brendan here, but. I would imagine we would move some cultivation, you know, this, it kind of depends on, we, but we could probably move some of the cultivation into that building as, as like a seedling starter. So we'd probably do that in the storage room. So that would, that would probably help us. You know, and again, it's, that, that would probably be the base of what we would do in there, so it would have, you know, probably all facets of it. I don't think we, we do anything that you could really call processing, but. You know, that, that's kind of for a manufacturing license.
Okay, so just describe for us, real novices here, what the, what the steps are going from, that are involved from harvesting that plant.
Alright, Ron, do you want to run them through that, probably has a better idea than me.
Yeah, Ron Baldwin, um, so in the, the process for harvesting is. When the plants reach maturity, they'll be chopped down, brought to an area outside where we will then. Remove all of the large fan leaves from the plants and we have machines that are called buckers that strip the. Bud product off of the stem, that will then go into a tote where it'll be weighed for specific. Metric batching weights and then we'll take samples from that to for all of our testing and then that product gets. A vacuum sealed into a Mylar bag, which is then put into the freezer trailers for storage.
So that all happens in the open field?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that's important.
Yeah, clarifying question, Madam Chair.
Well, that's just for right now, I mean, that's all gonna change once we have a building. So.
But isn't this the building we're talking about?
Well, no, I'm saying in terms of like some of the stuff that you're saying, it happens all outside, I mean, if we have a building that's up, I guess, well, I guess I'm looking at the, you know. Like down the road, a phase two building, we'll do something in that, but.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Francois.
So, I, I think you're, you're starting to address some of my concerns and my questions regarding to the purposes and I think. Attorney Constance, Costanza very much alluded to this here, we need to have specifics as to what, what will be, what will be done inside of the building, I think we're. We're hearing a lot of potential hypotheticals. Which have not been clearly established or stated and that needs to be included as part of the package.
Okay.
Especially, one moment, especially in light of the fact that this will be built. And in, in the, in, as I understand it, at least in the residential zone. And goes beyond the fifty feet that has been. Included as part of the commercial building, the, the commercial growing site, I meant.
I, I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Damon, go ahead.
Right, so with this building, I know that, you know, I talked to Roland and it seemed like we needed a building so that we could have the trailers. And then, you know, Nicole, send an email, it's got a whole bunch of information in it, but where are we now? Do I still need that twelve by twenty-four building to do this, or can I just go full speed and just not even have a building and go with the original plan? Like, it seems like everyone's asking what's happening in the building, how about this, what do I need to do in the building to make this work? So I'll do anything I need to do, I just need to know what I need to do, if I need to set up a cultivation, you know. Outdoor cultivation only allows us to. Put plants in a building in the veg stage, so there's only so much cultivation we can do with an outdoor license inside of a building. And when you're outdoors, you're supposed to be outdoors. But, you know, if I need to do something in particular in this twelve by twenty-four building, I'll just do it. If it's not big enough, I'll just make the building bigger, but, you know, originally after Roland, it said that I needed a. You know, primary structure or principal structure and ordered out the trailers, then we had a twelve by twenty-four foot building show up. I don't need that this year, if I could have it my way, just tell me what I need to do, but if I could have it my way with the porta potties, the trailer. Would you just do this this year, I'm, if I'm paving, I'm gonna roll in a nine thousand square foot building right behind it. So that nine thousand building is now coming, if I'm paving, you know, I'm not gonna have Brendan go do this entire stormwater report for pavement, might as well put a building there. So if we're paving, a nine thousand square foot building is now coming officially is phase two and that's just the footprint. Depending on where I'm going with this, I might go up a couple stories, but. If that building is gonna be there, now if I'm paving, that building's going there, so if I don't need this twelve by twenty foot building to have it grow this year. Because, you know, maybe now I can have these trailers, then I'd rather not put that building up. So I'm flexible to do anything, but if you guys come back and say, no, needed twelve by twenty-four foot building and now you need to put an extra twenty feet on it and. Take your plants from outside and bring them inside, which isn't. What we're doing, but I could do that.
I, I want to stop you right there, the, the questions that were raised is. About this building is, you know, what was it, what would its intention be, because if you want to bring your processing and packaging inside. Then that would not be the, the question was, can you build a big building to do all that processing on the residential side of the line here, it's clearly in the residential district, so instead of. Packaging and processing ten thousand square feet, you're packaging and processing all fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, it's covered, yeah, I, I would think that's covered under an outdoor cultivation license, so we're doing nothing that's manufactured. So it's all cultivation. But I understand what you're, what you're saying though. But yes, that building, the prime purpose of that building, you know, which, you know, I showed you guys last summer. Is for a dry cure building and then you, you start your veg, you know, in April or March inside the building, you know, getting ready to go outside. But the prime purpose is, you know, dry and cure and then while you're drying and carrying it inside, obviously you start packaging it inside. But, you know, we can, we can go either way.
But you're not talking about doing that in this twelve by?
No, 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 but I'm just, I'm just saying, if I need to have a building. The original reason why we have a twelve by twenty-four foot building isn't so I can have a nice bathroom. It was to make, you know, Roland happy because he said you need a principal building and I said, okay, can it be a shed and I believe he said no shed and I said, okay, there's a bigger build. The only reason I'm putting that building in is because Roland wanted a building to, for me to conform.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans.
Yeah, but if I don't need that building anymore, I don't want to put it in, I'd like to just keep going with my trailer and porta potty idea, so I'm not, I'm not married to that building. But, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna, Dana, I'm gonna let Bill have a chance, he hasn't said anything, Bill, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans, I just wanted to comment here, I believe the, the building came into this whole process because we said that the power couldn't be brought in. As we didn't have the building and the trailers were an accessory use of the building and we can't, that wouldn't work. Is there a possibility of the, they're not require the building and just have a way to bring the power in for the trailers and now that the building and that whole process is not needed at all?
I'm gonna refer that question to Roland James, who's here. Given town council's opinion, is it something that could be done, because as she said, we're not. It's not our jurisdiction to read the electrical code and the building code, is there a way to do that? If, if her ruling is you don't have to have an access, you don't have to have, that electricity is not necessarily an accessory used to a building? Is there some way that could be done without that building?
The electrical code isn't under my purview. The building code is. I, I would just like to clarify that the outdoor cultivation is allowed in a residential zone by special permit. So if this project was entirely in a residential zone and that building was part of the project, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The building is absolutely allowed under special permit, no matter what zone it's in. And I think it's a, a much better look for the town to have a principal structure on the property than to run this multimillion dollar business out of trailers. I would hate to think that we're gonna allow restaurants to come to town and work out our trailers.
What is, okay, a couple of questions, so if he puts this small building up for just that, those limited purposes of. You know, the, the. The equipment in the restroom, but no processing and then he later comes back to you and says, I want to put a nine thousand square foot building. On the commercial side of the line for the processing. Steps that are considered also part of cultivation, that would not be a problem?
I would say if he came back with a plan to add a nine thousand square foot building, it would go before the planning board again, at the very least for site plan review.
Well, I know this is, there's also, isn't there not a, a rule that is generally one building per site for a lot? So this would then be two buildings per lot, would it not?
If I, if I had the twelve and then I built the nine?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There would be two buildings on the lot, but I would certainly think that the, the initial twelve by twenty-four building could be repurposed as an accessory structure.
Okay, understand. Alright, um. It, it, it sounds to me, Damon, like. You mean, this is your project, you have to, you're in the driver's seat here, it sounds like you may have an easier route in getting it approved. If you put the structure in for power or you put the structure in, the small structure in the back and it held. You know, the office, restrooms, the equipment. Was pretty much limited to that purpose. Uh, which would, at least in Roland's mind. You know, give you a structure that. That welcomes the electricity in, we have a conflicting, as you've heard it, town council opinion that you wouldn't necessarily have to have a structure to bring electricity, electricity in, so I don't know. I mean, this is something you need to debate and you need to decide, but we can't, you can't say, well, here's plan A and here's plan B, will you approve one or the other, I think we need to have one plan. You know, that. To consider here, so.
Alright, I guess my next question is, we keep talking about electricity, if I can use electricity or not, you know, from national grid. What happens if I just said, alright, for this year until September, I'm just gonna run it off of my propane and my, my two generators, you know, I have one generator time working. You know, I have decimal levels which, which I can show you, you know, people won't hear from their property. But would that work then? Like, I, I know we keep talking about, can I hook up with electricity? You know, if I'm gonna pave parking, I'm coming with a building next, you know, it won't happen this year, but it'll happen starting in October, we'll start building it. But for this year, can I just go with a trailer idea, skip national grid? Or at least have national grid run my well? I mean, it's gonna take us, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not fooling anyone, I don't think I'm gonna have national grid, you know, in May, it's gonna take them a couple months, so we're, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission. Requires us to have two generators for my security system setup, so those generators are coming no matter what, the twelve and thirty-eight kilowatts are, you know, ordered on their way. So. Can I do that?
Back to Bill then, Bill. Have he applied for, say, I don't know, can you get a special permit that's good for a year, that's time set like that? Or issue a special permit for a year?
Well, it expires after two years if it's not exercised, if. I would think that the planning board could condition the special permit. For a timeline and that it be revisited to ensure compliance and something like that. But what I was trying to, trying to say here is, we've got a moving target, every time we get, we sit down and we talk with Damon. We get a, a different set of alternatives, we don't have a plan to agree on and I very much. Think that we should, unless we have minor changes, that we should have a plan that says this is what we're going to do. And, oh, here are a few minor changes as allowed under the permit. And we've got to stop floating alternatives and we've got to have a definitive plan, so to. And we've gotta stop floating alternatives and we've gotta have a definitive plan. So to move this forward with Mr. Schmidt's permission, I'd like to communicate with him and his engineer directly outside of the planning board meeting. And you know, that way he's got professional representation. He gets to review whatever recommendation is. He bounces it off of me, assuming that the planning board will accept a lot of my recommendations. And that by the next meeting, he will have a definitive plan that the board can take action on.
Whether that plan is a temporary plan for the coming year or a
I I would think we would only approves approve phase one, because phase two has its own issues.
All right, could I say that, you know, we have phase one in front of us. It's my original plan. You know, just take out that twelve by twenty-four building and that's my original plan. We're looking at it. You know, it's it's just, we're gonna go in with generators, get this up and running, and we're out of there and September.
No, it isn't. Damon, it isn't. You've changed things. You 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 produced number parking lots. The wetlands have changed. You've done recharge trenches and stone.
Well, that's not on us. I mean, you know, we we're following, you know, comments from the peer review. But our, everything that we've done, our original intention is is the same. I mean, I would think tonight, you know, i- if it's if the board and Roland and the powers that be, Bill and the attorney, I mean, can I operate without that twelve by twenty-four building on my generators? That's my question.
For a year?
For a year. I I mean, it's my original plan, just take out, because the only thing on this plan that we would change is just take out that twelve by twenty-four building. That proposed, you know, that parking is proposed parking. If you tell me I have to pave it, we're gonna pave it. We'll just, we can pave that parking and run off the generators. I can get this year's harvest in. And then we can work on phase two, which is gonna be, you know, that nine thousand square foot building footprint. And then I don't have to build that twelve by twenty-four. I was only going through that to, you know, accommodate Roland.
It doesn't work that way. You propose a plan, the planning board approves the plan, maybe with minor modifications. If you wanna say, take this plan and take the building off, you take the building off and submit the plan. So what I'm saying, pardon me?
It says proposed twelve by twenty-four foot building. We can pave that off.
The revised, you submit the revised plan. So when the planning board says this is the plan we approved, it's shows what you're proposing to do, not what you're not proposing to do.
All right, well, I'm just saying, so if that wasn't on the plan tonight, I'm sure if we could vote tonight, you know, not that I'm saying the planning board have to vote, but the planning board could always vote, say, take off the building, but I understand what you're saying. We need to turn in official plan.
And I have other comments. I haven't reviewed this plan. And rather than write a letter to the planning board saying, I have these eighteen comments and you need to address them, what I'd rather do with the planning board's permission and your permission is call you and your engineer up and say, these are my concerns. This is what I'd like you to do. So when we go in front of the planning board the next time, I can say to them, we have a, we have a list of of things and I will write that up. And they have been addressed. That, otherwise, we're swinging a, you know, balls flying by and we have no chance of closing it out.
All right, well, I guess then I would ask one more question, because if we're gonna take, and we're gonna do this, it actually does sound, if they're not gonna vote tonight, this sounds like a good idea. Um, but I would at least wanna know what the opinion is of Hubbardston is, can we do that? Is that legal? Is it all right to move forward with an idea that doesn't have this twelve by twenty-four building and we're running on temporary power this year? And then we'll, we'll change it up for next year. That would be my question tonight to the board. So I'm not wondering for the next two weeks, are they gonna accept that?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question through you?
Sure.
Roland, do you see an obstacle to that?
The only thing that I'm not sure of, Bill, is what uh, the definition of temporary power is uh, per the building code or if there's any time constraints on it. I don't believe temporary power is allowed for a year.
It was a hun- I I believe it was a hun- sorry to cut you off, Roland. I keep doing that. It was a hundred and eighty days, I think. I can check with my uh, electrician. He said that you have to do it is temporary because he asked, he asked Gardner's uh, electrical inspector. I think we just would have to keep renewing it.
I would have, I would have to ask my electrical inspector that question. I don't know the answer.
Okay, so Damon, it, while that's, that's an appropriate question for you guys to ask the electrical inspector, it really is your responsibility to prove that to the planning board. So you need a letter. You need a letter from a code compliance specialist, the the electrical inspector or somebody that says, this is how you do it. And then we incorporate that into the permit. It's real straightforward stuff. We just don't argue. We don't need to argue or debate. You need to get the experts to get the answers and then the planning board can rely on them.
Right.
So if we leave it at this, that we will put you, we'll continue the hearing till our next meeting, and at that meeting, we expect to receive um, a modification of the plan and all accompanying documents to go forward with vote pro, yea or nay, a special permit that's time limited for a year to operate this facility without the building and basically is shown on the plan um, with temporary electricity to the trailer that's allowed and the porta potties and so forth, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, well, that's the.
Adam Chair?
Yes, Roland.
Could we, could we ask Town Council about the special permit that's only good for a year? Because I'm not aware of such an animal.
Okay, is she still here, Mallory?
No, no. Nicole is, yes.
Yeah, she is still here.
Can you put Nicole, can you take the plan off and put Nicole on, let her answer that question? Because I don't know the answer to the question.
So, Madam Chair, is the question, can you condition the special permit
Can you?
After a year?
Yes, could we? Can you can make a special permit basically expire after a year?
I'd have to double check the, your bylaw to see if it's in there specifically. Um, I do believe that you could include a condition that the applicant comes back. Uh, let's see. Your, your bylaw actually specifically says that the special permit will lapse within two years of the grant.
That's only if it is.
Not exercised.
Exactly, upon not exercising it.
Yeah.
If it's not exercised, well, my opinion is as soon as he puts the plants in the ground, he's exercised it.
Correct.
So then it's good forever. And I'm no lawyer, but that's, that's what I think, that's how I think it works.
Sure, but we can, as as Council said, we can say, you need to prove compliance on a regular basis. And you will report back to the planning board to prove compliance on a regular basis. And if he's not in compliance, then if he's still running trailers in year three, then that's not part of the per- permit conditions and that's, that's a problem. Um, I'm sure it's not gonna be an issue. But there, we can ask him to come back on a regular basis and report to the planning board compliance with the, the special permit conditions. And the other way, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, but the other way we can do this is we can ask Mr. Schmidt to agree to revisit this issue in a year or two. And then if both parties agree, that's a consensus. Is that not correct?
Through through you, Madam Chair, if I may. I I think I might have misunderstood the question. I do believe that you can limit the term of the special permit so that it lapses, expires after a certain amount of years and the applicant would have to come back to renew the special permit, even if it's been activated. And I could provide a written opinion for you if you'd like that as well.
Sure, write us that if it wouldn't take long, that would be very helpful because it's a, again, a novel situation.
Alice.
Attorney.
Yeah, it's Attorney Connors again. I just wanted to add that, I mean, I've seen in other municipalities where there is a time limit on a special permit. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it is that, you know, it is permissible to do it. And but I would say also that you could put a condition in here that talks about, you know, how long the temporary uh, propane would be permitted and 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 when you expect, you know, full uh, electro, electrical connections made to the site. I mean, I don't think that's an unreasonable condition. But recognizing that, you know, he, it may take him a, a season to get uh, the electric company out there and to run the, run the conduit.
Okay, well, if we have consensus between the petitioner and our Town Council and the generally that we can do this, then I guess we don't need an opinion from her. We can agree to it. Yes.
Sure, I mean, the only, the only concern I'm bringing up here is, is, and and I I do not know what other bylaws have been written by other towns and if there's any special mentioning with regards to time limits, I would very much make, want to make sure that that our bylaw not only be looked and interpreted by itself, but also in comparison with those bylaws where supposedly there have been time limits as to whether or not there is something to the effect that in those bylaws, there are uh, allowances for such time limits as well as potentially looking at case law. I'm very concerned about this here because I think as has been mentioned by uh, uh, as has been mentioned here, we have had situations where uh, once, once a special permit has been allowed, that it basically i- is instituted and 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 therefore cannot be changed. I also have some concerns about the fact that, yes, we have put and we have had cases with other special permits where uh, individual uh, entities have had to report back. And they have not done so, and there's nothing to compel them to do this. And so as a result of this here, I don't think that we as a town at this point in time have form of enforcing that, uh, which is something that I have brought up to this board as well as to the select board.
Okay, so Attorney, go back to Attorney to Stansel, where, because we do want an opinion and that we can make a permit expire after a certain amount of time conditioned and include in that, what is our remedy to enforce, you know, to enforce the expiration? We wrote the permit or or can, can you help us with that?
I can provide a written opinion for you.
Okay, all right, it's sooner rather than later, unfortunately, because we're trying to get this moving. All right, do we have a plan, folks? Because we do have a whole agenda and it's very late. But can we continue the public hearing until, what's the next meeting date? Mallory, May?
May sixth.
May sixth. Can we have a vote to continue this hearing until May sixth from somebody?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Christopher Monroe for a second.
Okay, is this acceptable to the applicants? Because we usually have, have you sign something, but it's on Zoom. Do we continue the hearing until the sixth of May?
You're muted, Damon.
Sorry, yeah, that works.
Okay, so uh,
Madam Chair, if I may, um, you you might want to just also ask for something in writing as well. An email would suffice, in my opinion.
Okay, Damon, will you confirm with an email, please? Do you agree to continue the public hearing on this till the May sixth?
Yep.
Okay, so a vote on.
And Madam Chair, just sorry to interrupt, but I mean, I just would follow up with uh, Mr. Murray, he suggested that, you know, Damon and his consultants meet together and that, you know, we will do that, if that's acceptable to Mr. Murray in the, in the, in the board.
Yes, that is acceptable to us.
Okay.
That definitely has our interest at heart and we'd like to get this, we'd like to get to a point where we have agreement, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, um, on the continuance, the vote, live, all eye?
Bill Holmans' eye.
Monroe, I.
Doug, your eye.
Okay, it passes it. Well, this matter has been continued until our next meeting. Thank you. We need to move on to the next agenda item. Which is another public hearing. I hope uh, people are still there. Um, Mallory, do you wanna read the public hearing notice?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me just get back to it. All right, oh, public hearing on fifty-six Gardner Road. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Law and Hubbardson Zoning Bylaw, Article twenty-two, the Hubbardson Planning Board shall hold a hearing on Thursday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. Um, as provided under the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and general law, chapter thirty A, some section eighteen, the planning board shall meet via virtual means to consider special permit slash site plan applications from Bowie Bertold Paper Cranes Provision for recreational slash marijuana cultivation. The subject property is fifty-six Gardner Road, Assessor's Map O five parcel O eight O, consisting of two point six acres. This is located within the commercial district.
Thank you. You know, there is something I forgot, which is, are there members of the public that wanted to speak to sixty-nine Gardner Road out there? I guess it's been continued, but I don't know. I guess we'll move on to fifty-six. I should not have excluded members from my right to speak if there were any. Um, all right, so this is another marijuana uh, facility project. It is at fifty-six Gardner Road. It's entirely within the commercial district. We accepted the application as complete, I believe, at our last meeting. Is that correct? Um, so, and it has also been the subject of a lot of work, back and forth work with our consultant uh, and the petitioner's consultants. Um, so I guess I would like, um, well, I'm just trying. This is also an exte- this is also uh, it's kind of a scaled down project, again, for a phase one type project that involves just exterior growing and processing o- on this lot. But the lot, unlike the other lot, is all commercial and it does contain buildings. Uh, so with that as a starter, um, I guess, does the petitioner wanna speak first? Is Mr. Bowie here?
Hi, everybody. Yes, I am here. Um, so I guess I'm just here, we were originally hoping to, um, I guess, begin discussions about my complete submission from the last meeting. Um, so I'm really just turning it over to, I mean, I I think everyone at least read that initial submission. I did submit an updated um, response to Bill's peer review late this afternoon. I apologize. Wesley here from Thomas Worth Associates and myself and his colleagues, we're working on it hard, but it, of course, just today was the day. So I understand you guys haven't had that very long and need to look it over. There were some answers to a lot of the questions from the initial uh, review of the packet. So I really would just like to, I guess, hear from Bill or um, planning board members or, you know, let's just get the conversation, conversation going.
Okay, but I I did see that come in, actually. I don't know how many of the rest of the board got to see it. I scanned it. Um, I do think it uh, did answer a number of the questions. I don't know whether Phil had a chance to look at it again. It was very late. I do, I do know, I had some, some questions to ask you, and like, for example, one of his issues was the apple trees. Um, that you're gonna plant new apple trees. I saw that. Uh, and you've agreed to some of the changes he suggested. I guess I wanna ask, Bill, what do you see are the, if you haven't had a chance to read it, what do you see are the major stumbling blocks uh, to incorporating those changes and then also continuing this to the point where we get to a final uh, product that we can vote on?
So this application is a horse of a different color because, as you said, it's completely in the commercial district and we have existing buildings, we have existing parking. Uh, but the problem we have with the initial review is the plans were not consistent. They weren't giving us a straightforward picture as to what they were intending to do. Uh, we did not have a lot of heavy duty comments with regard to this, this application. Most of it was clarification and cleanup. Uh, and I got this one, I think, at two o'clock today. I'm sorry, guys, but I didn't even get it. I I printed it and brought it home. Uh, so really, all I see here are cleanup and clarification. Uh, I haven't reviewed what they've submitted. But what I did tell Mr. Bertold is that this one looks pretty straightforward. I really want the planning board to get a clean set of plans that we can reference for a decision. Um, the only thing that I didn't mention at this one and the other one is this is an outdoor grow operation and you need to make a finding that it's not deleterious to the neighborhood. And if anybody has walked past a marijuana, exterior marijuana grow facility uh, prior to harvest or during harvest, the odor is very strong. Uh, and it may very likely impact the neighbors, so that really needs to go into the record. Uh, but other. But other than that mitigation, they proposed a lot of changes based on my conversation. And I think that what I'd like to recommend to the planning board is that you ask my firm to start drafting an approval. Subject to my follow on review.
And also, if I could just add to that, thank you, Bill. Similar, like you're obviously opening the channel of communication with Damon and Brendan to just hit every nail on the head. Obviously the same goes with us as well. It's really just tell us, tell us, you know, what we need to do and we will, you know, we'll make sure everything gets done.
Okay. I'm willing to entertain that vote. I have a few questions first. Based on this and one of which is, I've heard a lot about going to the ZBA. And I don't understand why is, I know there's this encroachment into the setback of about seven feet to the corner of the building and then Bill's comment on that was, well, maybe it was a preexisting structure. Has there actually been a determination that it was, that it existed in 59 or whatever that setback, maybe the setback was increased? Do we know that it qualifies as a preexisting, nonconforming structure? In which case it would be allowed to encroach as long as the building wasn't terribly altered, right? Can, can you just address that issue, Bill? Because I don't understand.
I think it's been there and Roland could probably correct me if I'm wrong. I think the, the statute is, if it's been there for 12 years, regardless of its date and it hasn't been modified and it's existed in its current state, that it is entitled to grandfather.
Okay. All right. So you're going to clarify that in your, in this potential draft opinion, right? And then there would be, so originally it was also parking that wasn't going to be allowed in the setback. Is that what you're thinking about going to the ZBA for? I don't understand how that, that whole issue with the ZBA figures.
Yeah. So I, number one, I don't want to, I just want to be very clear. I don't want to confuse the board, the public or anybody where what you're referencing, Alice, is the Z, the application I have for a parking variance in regards to the phase two build of this project. So right now, you know, what we're talking about is simply just sort of the existing, using it as is for this outdoor grow. The ZBA request for a parking variance is in relation to putting parking within the hundred foot setback. Because as, if you remember, I have a larger plan there that creates a small dispensary. More employees of product manufacturing building, just a larger build out in general. So it's it has nothing to do with the outdoor as of, as of, you know, this, for this, this year at all.
Okay. So this is a strictly an outdoor grow. You're going to call it a phase one. We may not even need to call it phase one. It's just an outdoor grow facility.
And a change of use, change of use of existing structures.
Okay. For outdoor grow only. And then he's going to change him again to be a shop, but that's not on the plate right now.
Correct.
Right. Okay. All right. Okay. So that I guess was one of my major questions, right? Do. I do think on the issue of the odor, maybe we have to go back to town council on this too, but is there any objective measurement of, of odor?
Okay, yes. I would, I would, I would love to, I'd love to just answer that because I, I have, you know, we've responded in the, in the review to Bill's request for, you know, basically some action in that area. So we are, we're taking action. We're going to do what, all we can do in relation to, you know, the smell at around harvest time. While it's in the field, there's nothing we can do. When it comes into the building, we will filter the air through charcoal carbon filters, which basically scrubs the smell of, of marijuana. It's an industry standard. So, you know, any of the cultivation facilities that are, you actually don't know they're there, but if you'll see them in like mini malls and warehouse districts that are connected to other businesses and they are basically pulling all their air through these activated charcoal filters. I'm creating, Wesley and I came up with an idea, which I was planning on doing anyway, but now I'm glad I get to explain it. So it's, it's basically creating a very low negative pressure environment with exhaust fans just pulling the air from the building. And these are small six inches exhaust fans and they're in the new plan. This is in the plan, by the way, it, that I submitted today with a diagram. And it draws the air in and just very, you know, it emits it through the roof stack so that I have two in each building. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to use those, you know, I'll have an HVAC guy come basically tie in and create. It's very similar to a radon evacuation system. If anyone has like radon in their basement, you install a small squirrel cage inline duct fan, which basically draws a, you know, a steady stream of air, pulling it out of your basement, evacuating the basement. So we're going to be pulling the air through the buildings, through these sets of big activated charcoal filters. And everything leaving the buildings, the air will be scrubbed clean. Out in the field, there's nothing I can say.
Bill, I agree in terms of your question to the planning board, we have to say it isn't going to create an undue nuisance. I mean, you, you got a bylaw that only allows outdoor grow. You've got a natural product that's being grown. You've got reasonable, you know, you don't have, you're not planting it in the middle neighborhood. Really, you know, nearby houses. Is there, is there much we can do besides require him to filter the indoor part of the processing?
Well, there might be. It depends on the species that they're growing. Some species, I mean, some species are actually entitled skunk. I mean, it depends. They can choose a low aromatic species. Other than that, I'm not really sure what exterior limitations are. They can certainly take a look at prevailing winds during the harvest time and at least report back to the planning board who might be likely to be impacted. I could tell you from experience that it can travel more than 1,500 feet. Because as it becomes more odoriferous, if that's a real word, the closer it gets to harvest time, the oils are, are really building up. And when it's in full bud, that's when it's, it's actually when they're harvesting is when it will create a pretty good skunky smell. So if they're doing exterior harvesting across the street, that might be an issue. If they're doing their processing of the building, of the buds inside a building and they can put it through carbon filters, that's pretty impressive. That's why I say this project has a lot less environmental and control constraints than the other one. That's why we're able to say, you know, that it was a good submission and other than some, some things that perhaps they can only minorly control.
So can I add just one thing since we're on the topic of the, the outdoor smell? So this, based on the testing parameters in the state right now, this whole entire harvest that we're growing will be, will be grown just as what's called biomass in the state. So it's not going to be actual flower or, you know, marijuana that you would buy that would be in a pre-rolled cigarette or, you know, in a bag. It, it's literal, it's going to a large processor where it's all going to be soaked in ethanol alcohol. It's the, the compounds will be extracted. It's, it's a very quick, it's the quickest and cleanest exchange between grower and manufacturer there is. It requires the least amount of care. So for example, I would, you know, a drying cure for AAA top shelf flowers is going to be longer than if I'm simply growing this for biomass. Here's the main, here's a main point I'm actually kind of running away from. Marijuana grown for biomass is harvested two weeks early than normal AAA shelf or counter flower. So if, if we're saying that the flowering period of marijuana is typically 60 days, so it needs to be in a 12, 12 hour light cycle for 60 days. Most extraction strains and we're growing all strains that are, are straight for just commercial extraction are designed to peak around that 45 days. So we actually pulled the harvest time back overall significantly. If all this flower was going for top shelf, you know, just recreational flower, it would go to the full 60 days, full maturity and full smell. The 15 days that we're going to be pulling most of this stuff down are actually all of it down early. And that's if a hurricane doesn't come up the coast, then it's all coming down. But you know, it's basically, we're, we're kind of cheating the calendar by two weeks of the stinkiest time of year. And if it was just going to, if it was going to be, you know, shell flower, I would be, I'd be lying if I was going to say it wasn't going to go full term. This is actually not going full term.
Can you, can you put that in writing?
Yeah.
Put that in writing, Bowie.
Yes. I mean, well, here's the thing I can say. So like, obviously we're growing 12 different strains. So, you know, they all go into flower around the same time. At the 30 day mark, you basically just start looking at the different strains every day. You, you know, you take a 60 power jeweler's loop, you go in and you look and you kind of watch as the trichome formations start to grow and you're looking for a certain density and that's when you take it. So it's not a perfect science. It depends on the temperature of the year. Depends on how much, how moist it's been, but generally if we were, you know, when I'm with marijuana colleagues and we're talking about, you know, extraction flower, that number in our head is 45 days. It's not 60 days, which is, it's a significant difference.
Well, boy, if you could, if you could put it in writing, just something like, we will take the following steps to mitigate the, the or to, to minimize the growing odor. These are the steps we plan to take and explain that we're growing for biomass, just harvested earlier.
Yes.
Yeah. If you could send that to Bill and email.
Right away.
Incorporated, that would be helpful. Okay. So Bill's looking to a vote from our board to, and again, it's, it's actually Bowie's expense, but he feels he's ready that he could draft, that we could resolve the remaining issues and he could begin to draft a draft permit. Is that all right with the board? Shall we authorize him to do that? We may not need a vote to do that. I just need a consensus around that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think you're going to want to take public comment before you send me off.
Yes. Do we have public members waiting to speak? Almost made the same mistake. Mallory?
I don't see any hands up, Alice.
Okay. Roland, is there something you'd like to say about this project? He's muted. No.
No, I don't have any comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, this is true. This is the first time we've heard it. So there are no members of the public out there. I'm kind of surprised. Okay. Well.
Actually, I believe there are members out there, but nobody's saying anything else.
Okay. Well, again, two members of the public out there were really interested in what you have to say. Unlike the other projects, this is, this is not a continuing, this is our first real hearing on this. So if you want to be heard, you can really have some influence.
You have an open hand, you have an open, a hand there.
Yeah. Tom Brack, I'll just put a hand up. So let me move him over to panelists.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
This is Tom's wife, Jassy. We own the property, the farm that abuts this marijuana project. I am very, very, very concerned about the outdoor smell of the project. But I just don't know that we have any recourse to that. I don't know how far it's going to travel down the road in which we live that is very densely populated. But so I, I do have concerns. I don't know that there is anything that we can do.
May I ask a question on this regard? How, how far would you estimate the distance between your property and your residence specifically? Not, not your, not your boundary, but your residence?
Well, we, we have. Yeah, we have a residence that, not the residence in which we live, but the residence that we rent out is, is 800 feet away. Our residence, oh gosh, I don't know, is, is about half a mile, but there are a lot of other houses in between that.
I understand, but I think you can speak for yourself being a resident who abuts that. And so you're saying you're, you're at least half a mile, right?
No, I have a house that I rent, a property that I own that is 800 feet away. You know, I am concerned for the people who live in that property. Again, I, I understand that, you know, the bylaws allow this. But I do have a concern about that growing. I would appreciate. I know one of the things that there's been talk about doing is removing vegetation along the, the wall that, that, along the boundary wall. I would very much appreciate that vegetation staying to help buffer any smells and also to give privacy from the, you know, the commercial zone. Not only this project, but all the other commercial projects that are, that are on the road. So I would very much appreciate consideration being given to vegetation being along that, that boundary and not removed, including the old apple trees. Okay. That's, that's all I have to say. And, and I appreciate all the work that, you know, a lot of, of the project is great, is good, but that is my concern, those two things.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Jassy, feel free, we haven't met, but nice to meet you in this forum. Feel free. We're going to be there, you know, all the time now, just chug, chug, chugging along. So I spoke with Tom last week, your concerns are my concerns. So as we're trimming the rear boundary hedge row, let's get together and decide like something that will make us both happy. I'm, I'm totally fine with that. You know, I want you guys, I want you guys to be happy. I know this is a huge change coming and, you know, I want you to be included and have, feel like you have direct, you know, access just to ask me what's going on and, and make requests, not just in a public meeting forum.
And I, I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to work with us. I know you've already done that. I can say you've done a lot more than other projects that we've had to deal with. So I appreciate you, your willingness to work with us.
Then we're okay with the vote.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay. And Bowie, I think so, definitely get that letter off and about the, the odor mitigations, because it does help us to get confidence that we're not going to create a public nuisance, you know? And also if there are species that allows, maybe you say it's the harvest time mostly and Bill suggests there are also certain species that are more than others for lack of better.
Bill's actually, Bill's absolutely right. So there are a lot of strains that are just very, very, very stinky. I can say we're not growing any skunk strains. Skunk strains are usually lean towards the sativa or the subtropical lineage for growing those plants. They don't grow well in New England. So we, I can, I can say with confidence, we are not growing any skunk strains, which are called skunk because they stink. We're growing mostly denser flower like Afghan, Afghani derivatives, which are, which are kind of the bedrock of the extraction strains. And they're, they're generally smaller bushes. They're more compact, more contained, more resistant to the elements and much less stinky than say like super skunk, which is, you know, which is, you know, obviously famous for the name.
All right. Well, if you could list all of those odor reducing steps you are taking for the crop as well as the indoor processing, it would go a long way to assure the public and give.
So there, just to be clear, there aren't many steps I can take for, for the outdoor odor. What I can describe is more like the, the schedule of harvest that I'm, that I'm shooting for, which, which by nature is a, basically does not let the plant get to a. its most mature state, stinkiest state.
So do that and then also put in a note about the, the species you're using being less odorous.
Okay.
Please, the species you intend to plant. All right. Okay. All those steps. Okay. And then back to my board again, um, are we ready to authorize Bill to proceed with at least the preliminary draft of a permit on this project for our consideration?
Madam Chair, this is Francis Steyer again. I, the only thing that I would like to ask Bill is as, as to whether or not all of the items here that were presented by uh, his uh, review have been addressed. The reason I'm bringing this up because I do believe that there were still some open-ended questions. Uh, I'm just referring for, say, for example, on page three, Bill, uh, where you do, do indicate that um, under the parking space five-three D seven, uh, you're indicating that the planning board's decision should include the findings as to whether this is acceptable or not. This has to do with off-street parking and the loading area shall be surfaced with the asphaltic bituminous and so forth. And I believe that there may be some other points here and there that do require the board either to put forth judgment and that you either highlight those so that we can complement what you are coming back to us with, with very poignant answers to those. And then we can expedite this here.
To answer that question, um, they have nine parking spaces, which under the zoning bylaw allows them to do use the hybrid, which is permeable pavement or other durable, non-dust-producing surface. Uh, and that, that's pretty much what they have out there. They have macadam and gravel and some combination thereof. So that's, we're not, they, they chose the number deliberately, I'm quite sure, on the number of parking spaces. And this is phase one. So from that perspective, I'm pretty sure they comply, but we're gonna certainly ask the planning board to make a finding. Um, so it might be worth members of the planning board going out there and taking a look to see that the surface is, in your opinion, a durable hard surface that won't create dust and will be suitable.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. And it's, it's not just that one point, but there are other areas that you have.
Understood.
Yeah, there. Believe that the planning board needs to provide their actual input. And final say on this here.
Discretionary items, yep.
There are also a fair number that he has addressed in the answer that would rival this afternoon.
And I didn't, I didn't even look at it.
But I, I did read it and I did, I did see that. Okay. Well, well, we will go ahead with um, taking the vote to continue this hearing again, also until, was it May sixth, our next planning board meeting? Um, motion, can I have that motion from someone?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second to the motion to continue the hearing to May sixth.
This is Francis Steyer. I'm seconding the motion.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Lived all eye.
Steiger, I.
Monroe, I.
I.
Okay. And um, we need, Bowie, can you send an email that says um, you consent to the extension of this hearing to May sixth?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on. We'll call this uh, hearing, um, continued until that date and get, move on to the next uh, article. Thank you. The next article um, involves, uh, also came before us last time. It involves the property at thirty-six Gardner Road. Um, and we have a request from somebody looking to buy that property. We had this request to modify three aspects of the special, or it's at a special permit. It was a site plan, to make three changes to the site plan. Um, and so we sent them off to, to Bill to review and asked him, could they be accepted as minor changes without having to reopen another hearing on another site plan review? And Bill's answer was that he believed they could be considered minor changes. Um, the changes requested were uh, to change interior configurations of the units to provide a mix of size of these storage units. Uh, the second one was to install a second uh, gate. So you had both an entry gate and an exit gate, which uh, mostly functions to keep people from being locked into the facility, uh, because it's not a um, facility that would always have an onsite manager. And the third um, request was to construct a vestibule, a, a small area where customers can remotely rent, through which customers can remotely lease space. So they don't have to go online and do it at home on their computer. Um, so this would be like, was described as an ATM-like uh, kiosk space. And the space, this, this machine would be located adjacent to the proposed parking spaces at the front of the site. So they could access it without, before they went into the gate. I don't know, is, is Mr., who's again, who's the applicant here?
Mr. Hall.
Yeah, Mr. Hall and Mr. Curtis.
Members of the boards, how are you?
Yes, there you are. So did I describe this correctly?
You did an excellent job.
Okay. Are there questions from board members to Mr. Hall?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I have none.
Okay.
Here.
So I, um, if there are no questions, are there any objections to accepting Mr. Murray's recommendation that we allow these changes as minor changes? If there are any objections, we should probably take a vote to allow them as minor changes, correct? Um, and to modify the site plan accordingly. Um, so the vote would be to approve the three changes requested by um, the petitioner here to alter the configuration of units, to install an end exit and entry gates and to allow a um, area in which customers can remotely lease space adjacent to the parking lot and all as shown on his plan. So can I have a motion to?
Chair, if I could speak for a second before you get that motion? We are technically, we're not the owners of the property yet. So I don't know, we don't have authority to change the site plan, but we just wanted to get feedback from the board that uh, these changes would be uh, addressed as a minor field change. It wouldn't have to go back to address uh, the planning board again in a public hearing and change.
Okay, so you don't want.
I just wanted to make sure.
To change the permit tonight, you just want assurances that we would do this?
Correct, because technically we don't own the property, so we can't have you do that. But we just wanted to get the position of the board before we purchased the property, because these things we, we feel are important to the project to make it successful. And without these changes, uh, we might not move forward with the project. So that's why we wanted your opinion and the board's uh, approve, you know, their opinion on how they felt and also uh, Bill's uh, recommendations.
Well, I think he would be inclined to, you can see, accept his opinion, right? I mean, all boards can always change compositions, but. Yes, Bill?
Uh, I did speak with Mr. Curtis and I see his, his name on the screen. He granted me permission to talk to Aaron Hall Associates and write the letter. So maybe he will agree to this modification so that the board doesn't have to address it again.
Mr. Curtis, would you like to speak to that?
You're muted.
Mallory will fix it. Wait a minute.
There, there I go. Good evening, board. Uh, yes, I don't, I don't have any issues with it.
Would you grant permission for the board to accept this as a minor change?
Yes, I would, Bill.
Okay, then can I?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Bill has made the motion. Is there a second?
Mr. from Monroe, I second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Uh, lived all eye.
I, your eye.
Bill Holmes, I.
Monroe, I.
Okay. So we consider those minor uh, changes incorporated into the site plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your help.
We need to do a letter to that expect, Bill.
Uh, Mr. Curtis should.
I mean, we should issue a letter stating to Mr. Curtis, stating.
Yes.
Okay, so Mallory, put that on the to-do list. We'll do that. Okay, last item on the agenda tonight. These people have been waiting a long time and we're getting tired. But on the other hand, it just came in and we gave them a, a quick bill. So this is an application. It's an A and R plan. It's proposed uh, by Sterling Real Estate Development, Inc. It's for property located on Old Princeton Road, not far from the intersection of uh, Hillville Road and Simmons Hill Road. And if you're really familiar with Hubbardston, it is actually abuts the property that is, I can't read this with the tiny, the tiny print, Moosehorn Hill condominium uh, associations uh, property. So there, it's a one lot. Um, it's been proposed to be subdivided into three separate lots. There, each of the proposed lots are, uh, they're all ones, two-point-four acres, ones, two-point-one-two acres, one, two-point-one-nine acres, all have over um, two-hundred feet of frontage. There are no buildings presently, at least as shown on the plans on any of these lots. And they, they do appear to meet all of the standards set forth in uh, our list under um, four-point-zero-one of the subdivision rules and regulations for plans, believe not to require approval. I've checked through them. So is there anything, I can't read the applicants, who's acting on behalf of Sterling Real Estate? I believe it's Simpson, maybe?
I know it's Steve, Steve Ballard. I'm from Whitman and Bingham.
Okay, the surveyors. Yes.
Alice, Bill Murray has his hand up.
Bill Murray, yes. Hang on.
I have a quick question. Is this land part of the land that was part of Moosehorn Hill? Is it owned by Moosehorn Hill?
It is not. It's, no, it's not owned by Moosehorn Hill.
Okay, so it's not subject to their special permit?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question.
It's owned by Sterling Real Estate Development, Inc. Um, is there anything more you want to tell us about this land or that we should know about this land?
Yeah, I know structures on it. You had mentioned that if there were, we would have shown them.
And there's, um, I know you, I see that you opted for the sufficient upland rather than delineating wetlands. Are there a lot of wetlands in this?
There are, there are no wetlands that I know of on the property.
Okay. So it's a very, I think, a very straightforward A and R.
Yes.
Um, all right. Well, I'll take questions from the board. We do have this issue right now of how you get these plans signed. Is the Mylar in Mallory's possession at the moment?
It is.
Anyone's welcome to come down to the office, so they can come in and sign.
Okay, because technically I don't think, um, I mean, we have to find that it meets the criteria. We can make that finding tonight for acceptance of an A and R plan, but the actual act required is that we actually go in and sign the plan.
Yes.
So are there any further questions on the part of anyone on the board regarding the plan? And are people all satisfied with um, our ability to sign it?
Can we just go through the list?
We can. We certainly can. And you can.
Probably should.
But we should. Um, so our list includes that the plan show all property boundaries, north point, date and scale. That's all there. The name of the record owner, the name of the registered land surveyor who's here with us tonight, and the Worcester Registry of Deeds book and page reference um, of the conveyance of record to the present owner. That is all there. The areas of each lot are stated. There is, I believe, sufficient data to determine the location, direction and length of every street and way line, lot line and boundary line, monuments or references necessary to establish these on the ground. And I know, I know uh, the Worcester Highway, Worcester County monuments that you reference. I did notice also a stone wall at the end of the third lot. Um, and would like to just point out that this road is listed as a scenic way. So you should tell the owners that if they're gonna breach that wall to put in drives or if there are trees, there's also tree requirements in our scenic way by law, that they need to make sure that they check that by law before they actually begin developing these lots.
Okay.
They have to come back for a special, uh, for a scenic road. But clearance. Um, the fifth item is where practical boundary lines of contiguous and adjacent land and the names of owners thereof is determined from the most recent tax list. I did see Butter's names were on there. The location of all permanent monuments properly identified, which I think mostly are the highway bounds, but there is that stone wall. The location and names and present widths of non-public, private, non-public or private ways abutting the property, there are no such non-public, private ways that abut this property. Soodles for the endorsement of the board. Uh, the approval is not required and the signatures of board members that walk is on the plan. Zoning classification and location of the zoning district boundaries that may lie with zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the locus of the plan. He states on the plan, the entire property is in residential agriculture. Ten is, uh, in the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land in the, in the ownership of the applicant shall be shown. In this case, it's just a straight division of all the land that exists into three lots. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
There would be no remaining land.
That's correct.
Eleven would be the location of all existing buildings, including setbacks and yard, rear yard and side yard designations, but there are no existing buildings. Correct?
Correct.
Location and area of any wetlands, I ask, on the lots created by the plan, uh, including the remaining land. But in lieu of that, you can, the applicant can provide a written certification from the surveyor who prepared the plan that the remaining parcel of land contains the minimum required upland area required under the zoning bylaw. And what he has put on there is a statement that all three lots have the required minimum upland area. Uh, and then the thirteenth and final, I believe, is uh, the A and R approval does not constitute compliance with zoning requirements for building purposes. And that statement is on there. So all the criteria is met, I believe. Okay? So.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that's good. Um, so can people, Mallory, when is the office now open to, how do we get this signed?
Yeah, I'm there Monday through Thursday from eight till about three. Um, we are closed Monday because it's a holiday, but just come in and ring the doorbell and anyone can come in.
Okay, Ken, I get everybody on the board to pick a time to stop by between Tuesday and Thursday next week, when, between eight and three. Just give Mallory what a heads up with an email or a call, right?
Shoot over an email.
Okay. Can everybody do that? Is everybody be around?
Bill Holmes, I'll, I'll do that next week.
Okay, everybody else?
Madam Chair, this is Francis Steyer. Probably be uh, Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
Okay. It's nice that you're open. Yeah. And Christopher?
Yeah, Chris, uh, this is Christopher. I can, I should be able to do that Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. And I could definitely can do that. All right. So I believe that we, there are other things on this agenda we could take up, but it's far too late and there's nothing else urgent on it. So.
Alice?
Yes.
You guys didn't take a vote to sign?
That is correct. We need.
We didn't what? Oh, take a vote to sign the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
If we're actually signing it, maybe we should. All right.
You do.
But, okay, so um, I'll entertain a vote that the, the plan make, meets all the appropriate criteria and that the planning board will sign it.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes will make that chip, that motion.
Madam Chair, this is Francis Steyer. I'm seconding that motion.
Okay. We, we, again, we have to do named roll call. So lived all eye.
Bill Holmes, I.
Christopher Monroe, I.
Steiger, I.
Okay, we have approval of the quorum. Bill, can John Demali, who isn't here, sign the plan as well?
Uh, he can. It's an administrative action of a majority vote of the board. He can.
Okay. Then Mallory, do you want to also call him and let him know there's a plan to be signed?
Sure.
He doesn't actually need to, if you have a majority.
Right.
Well, okay, but you should have an opportunity to, I think, if he wants. He often has to work late and cannot sometimes make these meetings. All right. Um, there is probably one thing before we adjourn that I should tell you that I didn't get to, and that is there, it's budget season.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard's still here. I, I think we should tell him that we're all. Mr. Ballard's still here, I, I think we should tell him that we're all set with him and thank him for coming to the board.
Mr. Ballard, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I, I muted, I was gonna thank you, but you went ahead to something else, so I just muted and I was gonna leave, but thank you very much.
So if you were standing in front of me, it'd be better, I'm sorry. Mallory will contact you when we have at least four signatures on there.
All right, very good, thank you.
We'll try to get it to you by Thursday, so you could pick it up.
Okay.
Thanks for coming tonight and waiting this very long night.
No problem.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Francis Steyer here. Before you enter into this budget, since we are in the, in the discussion, as we had earlier in the, in our, you'd mentioned scenic roads, stone walls, and I believe, Bill, you're still on the call, right?
I am.
I, I have a question. I do know, and I do believe that Brigham Street is considered to be a scenic road. Is Brigham Street extends beyond the railroad tracks, which at the end of Hillville Road, Bill, you very aware of it, because you live on the same street that I do, to the right are the, are the tracks, right?
Isn't, isn't that New Westminster at, at the junction of Hillville?
That's, that was my question, and the reason I'm asking that is, is because immediately after the tracks, there's a significant project that is happening there. Do believe that there is a stone wall there that may have, or appears to at least have been bridged, or that been, been removed.
Oh, seriously, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you driving on Depot Road?
No, it's not on Depot Road, this is actually on, if, if you continue past, if, if you go down Brigham Street, you know where Tom Collier lives, obviously, you go down, and then you hit the, you, Hillville Road is to the right. As you continue, there's a railroad track.
Well, they're doing a new house lot, it's a New Westminster.
There's a new, there's a new house lot, correct? And that, that was my question as to whether or not that is already considered New Westminster Road, or if that is, or if that is still considered to be Brigham Street.
That, that's New Westminster Road.
Okay, well, in that case, it's a mute point, and the reason is, is because it's only Brigham Street that is actually considered to be a scenic road. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Before you go, Alice, I just have one other point of order I'd like to bring up. So John Demali was not present tonight at the special permit site plan for either of the marijuana public hearings. And the town has adopted what's known as the Mullen Rule, he's allowed to make up one meeting by looking at the recording. If he does not do that, or if he can't make the next meeting, he's not eligible to vote. But Erica has made the meetings and she is eligible to vote.
Okay.
So I just want to highlight that, that you will have a full quorum with your alternate. Otherwise, if we don't have a full quorum, we have to inform the applicant that doesn't lead a unanimous vote in order to get their special permit.
May I also bring this up, Bill, and that is, is I do believe that this, this was already the second meeting that we had with, with Damon Schmidt, right?
Yes.
And so he has not missed one, but he's actually missed two, right?
If he's missed two, he's ineligible.
I, I do believe that is indeed the case, so we definitely need to have
He's missed the last two.
Okay, so it's now, Erica is now an eligible voter.
Yes.
We need to make sure that Erica is, is present at all times, including the next one.
Erica, I'll be there. I'll be here.
Okay. No arm twisting, but it's
Really, really important, right?
Important housekeeping.
Thank you for that point. So the only thing I want to make with respect to the budget is I will circulate a copy to the board. I don't think we actually have a lot of say in this, but if you, anybody really objects to it, if you notify Mallory, I believe it's due before the next meeting, I think I would have to call a special meeting to deal with it. So I apologize, but I will send it out, and, and I am willing to call another meeting if we, if we believe that it is unreasonably unfair. Or there just really needs to be further discussion. It was a lapse on my part. I just received it, but still I did receive it in time and it should have been on the agenda. All right, so having said that, I'm willing to take a motion to adjourn at this
Before you do so, Madam Chair, I, I want to remind those members of the board who are potentially up for election, if they have not yet submitted their nomination papers, that the, that the deadline is coming up very soon, which is Tuesday, April the 20th. And I think this impacts at least two members of this board.
Yeah, it's John and
And
Chris, right, so Christopher, so.
So can I add another comment? If we have a special permit ongoing during the elections, then we have to start all over with the new board members, if they are in fact new.
All right.
Just so everybody knows.
And the election is June 8th.
So if Christopher gets elected and John gets elected, then you're, well, John doesn't count because he's missed one anyway.
Christopher, don't miss this deadline.
I won't.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's gonna be your, that's gonna be your placard, vote for Christopher so that we can
Be careful what we say, it's public.
Don't you guys love it when I do housekeeping?
Thanks for watching out for it.
Reaction at anxiety level, all right.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I will make that motion.
Okay, it's been All right, all in favor, lived all eye?
Steyer, I.
Bill Holmes, I.
Monroe, I.
And lived all eye.